I see him. Do you want me to go ahead and get people seated? Or you want to wait? The school board members are like black. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats so that we may begin the swearing in ceremony. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats so we may begin the swearing in ceremony. School board members to be sworn in should come down to the right-hand side of the auditorium. And existing? No, 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 I don't think it's everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats as we begin the school board swearing in ceremony for Fairfax County Public Schools. School board members who are to be sworn in, please come down to the front of the auditorium on the right. Thank you very much. Again, ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. We will begin the swearing in ceremony in just a minute. School board members to be sworn in, please come down to the front of the auditorium on the right. Thank you. Are all the board members? Ann. Ann. Are all the board members? Who? She's coming, she's coming. Hey, hey, Ann. Ladies and gentlemen, we will begin in one minute. Please take your seat, everyone, please be seated in one minute. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. That's how we do it in schools, so what's good for students is good for adults. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dr. Scott Braybrand, Superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools, and it is my great privilege and high honor today to be part of the Master of Ceremonies for the Fairfax County School Board Administration of the Oath of Office here on December 12th, 2019. We are so grateful for so many of you to be here this evening on this historic moment for the Fairfax County School Board. Please stand with me now for the presentation of colors, the pledge of allegiance, and the singing of the National Anthem by the Woodley Hills Elementary School Chorus under the direction of Courtney Tucker. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Many thanks to the Woodley Hills Elementary School Chorus. Let's give them a big round of applause. Also, to the Lake Braddock JROTC, under the leadership of Sergeant First Class Wiles, Cadet Val Van Curran, the commander, Cadet Camilio Gonzalez, Cadet Tyler Garkey, Cadet Megan Korinski, and Cadet Emily Suarez. We again appreciate their supports this evening. As you walked in, many of you may have gotten to hear the talented, the very amazing West Potomac High String Quartet under the direction of Alicia Day Javklin. Let's give them a big round of applause. The String Quartet will also be playing for your entertainment at this evening's reception after the swearing in ceremony is complete. We are very proud of all of our students here in Fairfax County, and we appreciate their support and participation of this Oath of Office ceremony. At this time, I would like to recognize some special guests. First of all, we have Delegate Eileen Fillercorn, who is the first speaker designate and the first woman speaker in 400 years in the General Assembly. We have Delegate Mark Keem. We have several outgoing school board members that I would like to recognize tonight. Ryan McElveen, School Board Member-at-Large. Janie Stroud, School Board Member from Janesville. Sandy Evans, School Board Member from Mason District. Pat Hines, School Board Member from Hunter Mill. I also believe my colleague in Fairfax, at the City of Fairfax, the Superintendent, Dr. Phyllis Pajardo is here. I hope I've got Toby Sorenson, City of Fairfax School Board Member is here. Toby, please stand and be recognized. I also want to recognize tonight, family members of current school board members and the new school board members, will you please stand and be recognized for what you have done to have tonight happen? We do know, I've come to deeply appreciate the sacrifices that school board members make day in and day out to serve the Fairfax County community, and it does take a family, a supportive family, to do that kind of work. So we thank you for all of your support, for those of you who supported school board members over the past years, and those who are coming tonight to support school board members for the years ahead. It's also my great privilege to have the ability to work with the best and brightest folks in Fairfax County educators. I want to recognize and ask my leadership team to stand up and be recognized by this group tonight. Each of them works very closely with the school board, and we look forward to continued partnership together as we work to make our school system the premier school system, not just in the country, but in the world. So thank you again for your work, leadership team. As you all know, the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which economic, social, and intellectual capital of our Commonwealth is built and sustained. Locally elected school boards play an instrumental role in our communities, for they are charged with the high responsibility of governance of our public school systems. Our young people and our public schools are a community's most precious resource. So the stewardship of great schools is very important, and we are thankful tonight for each of the public servants who will be sworn in in just a few moments this evening. This evening, the newly-elected Fairfax County School Board will take the oath of office, one member at a time. The oath will be administered by Fairfax County Circuit Court Chief Judge Bruce D. White. Judge White, thank you for being here. I would also like to recognize Judge Cassigbyan, who is joining Judge White this evening. Judge White, at this time, will you please step forward to the microphone over here to administer the oath of office?
Thank you, it's my honor.
We will now begin with the swearing in of Riccardi J. Anderson.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Riccardi J. Anderson...
I, Riccardi J. Anderson...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the Mason District Member...
As the Mason District Member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
Of the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Let's give another congratulations to Dr. Riccardi Anderson. We will now have the swearing in of Laura Jane Cohen.
Would you raise your right hand and swear after me? I, Laura Jane Cohen...
I, Laura Jane Cohen...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
I know, I feel the same way. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the Springfield District Member...
As a Springfield District Member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Congratulations again to Ms. Laura Jane Cohen. Now, we will have the swearing in of Karen L. Corbett Sanders.
Raise your right hand and swear after me. I, Karen L. Corbett Sanders...
I, Karen L. Corbett Sanders...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the Mount Vernon District Member...
As the Mount Vernon District Member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Now, we'll have the swearing in of Tamara Dernak Kofax.
Will you swear after me? I, Tamara Dernak Kofax...
I, Tamara Dernak Kofax...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the lead district member...
As the lead district member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Ms. Dernak Kofax. Now, we will have the swearing in of Carl Frisch.
Will you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Carl Frisch...
I, Carl Frisch...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the Providence District Member...
As the Providence District Member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me.
Congratulations, Mr. Frisch. Now, we'll have the swearing in of Karen Keys-Gamara.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Keys-Gamara...
I, Karen Keys-Gamara...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the at-large member...
As the at-large member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Now, we'll have the swearing in of Megan O. McLaughlin.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Megan O. McLaughlin...
I, Megan O. McLaughlin...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties...
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me...
As the Braddock District Member...
As the Braddock District Member...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. McLaughlin. Congratulations, Ms. McLaughlin. Now, we'll have the swearing-in of Melanie K. Maron.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Melanie K. Maron.
I, Melanie K. Maron.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the Hunter Mill District Member.
As the Hunter Mill District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Maron. Now, we'll have the swearing-in of Abraar E. Omeish.
Would you raise your right hand and swear after me? You can please, if you'll please, that work okay? That's good. You'll repeat after me. I, Abraar E. Omeish.
I, Abraar E. Omeish.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the at-large member.
As the at-large member.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Omeish. Now, we will have the swearing-in of Stella Pokarski.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Stella Pokarski.
I, Stella Pokarski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the Sully District Member.
As the Sully District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Pokarski. Now, we will have the swearing-in of Elaine Tolan.
Would you raise your right hand and swear after me? I, Elaine Tolan.
I, Elaine Tolan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the Drainsville District Member.
As the Drainsville District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Tolan. Now, we will have the swearing-in of Rachna Sizmore-Hizer.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Rachna Sizmore-Hizer.
I, Rachna Sizmore-Hizer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the at-large member.
As the at-large member.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me.
Congratulations, Ms. Sizmore-Hizer. Ladies and gentlemen, a final round of applause. If the newly-elected oath of office would stand, a final round of applause for your new Fairfax County School Board. One final round of applause, please. This concludes our evening ceremony. Please join us for refreshments, and thank you all for being here for this historic evening. Thank you very much.
Can you ask the board to come up and stand for their pictures?
Family members and newly sworn-in board members, please stay for some pictures prior to going to the refreshments. Thank you, Judge.